Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Welcome, everyone. We have a nice big crowd tonight, so thank you all for coming out. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 2nd, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Naidoo.
Mr. O’Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Here.
President Fox.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I’d like to call on the members of Fountain Baptist Church to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notice regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
Yes. A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the regular enclosed session of February 4th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. First of all, congratulations to Dr. Marion Glenn, who was the recipient of a 2020 Union County Woman of Excellence Award for her work in the area of environmental sustainability. For more than a decade, our community has benefited from the leadership of Dr. Glenn on the Environmental Commission and on other summit initiatives that promote positive environmental action. I look forward to attending the ceremony on March 27th and to celebrating this award with Marion. Construction of the new Summit Free Market Building is progressing well at the municipal transfer station, also known as the Dump. Earlier today, the walls were framed, and it is starting to look like a real building. To finish construction, the Summit Conservancy needs to raise an additional $90,000. If you would like to contribute, please go to summitconservancy.org. I know I mention this project often, but this program is unlike anyone else, anything else offered by other municipalities. It is run by high school students, staffed by middle school students, and some adult volunteers. So it is not only inspiring a generation of young people who believe in reducing and reusing, it provides housewares, sports equipment, furniture, tools, and more to people in our community who need it, and all for free. Plus, it saves the City of Summit on bulky waste disposal fees. It is estimated that in the last 10 years that we’ve been working with the Free Market and running this program, we’ve saved 120 tons of bulky material from our waste stream, which means that’s all those tipping fees we did not have to pay. I’m thrilled that this program will be expanded once the building is finished, and I encourage people to donate if they can. Lastly, the first Board of School Estimate meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 5th at 7:00 p.m. at Summit High School, and the second meeting where there it will be a vote taken by the Board of School Estimate is on Monday, March 30th at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall in Council Chambers. I encourage everyone that is interested to attend. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers, the City Administrator, for his report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I just have two items to report on this evening. First, work on New Providence Avenue with the installation of a curbing started today, and this project on, of the project is expected to be completed by the end of the week with paving scheduled for spring when we anticipate some better warmer weather. And the second item, information on the annual summer internship program for college students will be released publicly on March 2nd, with applications being accepted from March 9th to April 10th. Residents who have completed at least one year at a college or university are eligible to participate. Internships are unpaid and take place over a four-week period during the month of June. Please visit the city website for more information. And that’s all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we’re on to presentations and ceremonial awards. And first, we have a mayoral proclamation for the Summit High School football program.
Thank you. I’ll come up and I would invite members of the Summit High School football team and representatives to join me at the podium.
Come on, Kevin.
The lineman and the quarterback.
Come on, guys.
All right. I had to come up. All right. I’m very happy to do this. Whereas Summit High School Football Program has recently been recognized as the winningest football program in Union County in the past decade, from 2010 to 2019, and whereas this outstanding achievement includes a record of 89-20, which is an 82% winning percentage, 10 playoff seasons in a row, 13 sectional playoff wins, three state championships in 2012, 2013, and 2018, playoff wins in 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2016, and 2018, and seven conference championships during the decade. Whereas there have been two head coaches during this time, Ronald Liberato from 2010 to 2012, and Kevin Costello from 2013 to 2019, both following the philosophy emphasizing the motto “pride, discipline, and tradition.” And whereas both coaches give due credit for the success of the varsity program, so that’s Summit Youth Football Program, a program run by the Summit Department of Community Programs under the direction of Mark Osorowski, with assistance from volunteer coordinator Kevin Fagan and his staff of volunteer coaches. Whereas both coaches also recognize the valuable contribution of the varsity and freshman coaches, and the support that the program receives from the Summit Administration, the parents, the Summit boosters, the Summit Football Alumni Association, the Summit Community, and that, last but not least, the players who have made the record possible. Now therefore, I nor a rate as mayor of the City of Summit to hereby proclaim February 19, 2020, as Summit High School Football Program Recognition Day in the City of Summit, and I ask all citizens to join me in congratulating the Summit High School Football Program as the winningest football program in Union County during the past decade. In witness whereof, I adhere on to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 19th day of February in the year 2020. Gentlemen, thank you very much for all you do.
For presentation, we have Fountain Baptist Church doing a presentation for Black History Month. So come on up and welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
I have my notes, but I need my eyes.
Go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Portia Hood Marshall, and thank you for this opportunity to share with you tonight Black History Month. What is its story? Dr. Carter G. Woodson began Negro History Week the second week of February in 1926, which became Black History Month, now celebrated during the entire month of February. Woodson was born to slaves in December 1875 in New Canton, Virginia. He was a noted historian, author, and founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, currently today known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, in which its mission is to promote, research, preserve, interpret, and disseminate information about the black life, history, and culture in the globe, for a global community. He is known as the father of black history. He believed if you don’t know your, if you don’t know our history, you may not know how to appreciate the true value of the black culture. Black history is not just me citing accomplishments of a few notable African-Americans, such as Harriet Tubman, who led many slaves to freedom, Garrett Morgan, who was the inventor of the, of both the gas mask and the three-way traffic light, Charles Drew, who was a surgeon, medical researcher, who improved techniques in blood storage and transfusions, which was applied to develop a large scale of blood banks during World War II. And he was also the founder of the American Red Cross Blood Bank, as we know today. Even Hattie McDaniel, 1940, she was the first African-American to win the Oscar for her role in Gone With the Wind. And oh, how I wish my grandfather, Worthy Ducksworth, born as a sharecropper in Mississippi, who read on a third-grade level, raised seven children, sent them all to college, paid $2 for a poll tax to vote, and I actually, actually have it, was alive to see our beloved 44th President Barack Obama, the first African-American president. Now, that was history, not just black history. Black history is so much more. It is about the experiences and movements of African-Americans of the past, the present, and the future. As Dr. Robert L. Johnson, the Sharon and Joseph, Muse Corral, and Dow Dean of Rutgers New Jersey Medical School, who by the way is also a black man, said, “Black History Month. Remember, educate, and celebrate.” Black history is inseparable from American history. Many of the political forces that exist in this country are related to the presence of African-Americans. By not recognizing their contributions of people of color, we begin to denigrate them as individuals. If you haven’t already, take a ride to Washington, D.C. Visit the African-American History, the African-American Museum of History and Culture. Read and explore. In closing, let me leave you with this note. Black history should not only be celebrated just in one month, and just by African-Americans, but should be a part of everyday knowledge, celebrated by everyone. And let us continue to tell our story through music.
Oh, freedom. Oh, freedom over me. And before I be a slave, I’ll be buried in my grave and go home to my Lord and be Oh, freedom. Oh, freedom. Oh, freedom over me. And before I be a slave, I’ll be buried in my grave and go home to my Lord and be No more weeping. No more weeping. No more weeping over me. And before I be a slave, I’ll be buried in my grave and go home to my Lord and be Oh, freedom. Oh, freedom. Oh, freedom over me. And before I be a slave, I’ll be buried in my grave and go home to my Lord and be
Violet Johnson, 1870 through 1939, a woman of vision, faith, and service. My name is Myles Blackley, and I am a student at Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School, and I’m here for a few minutes to share her story, history, black history in Summit. Violet Johnson was born in Wilmington, North Carolina in April, April 1870. At an early age, she moved from Wilmington to Brooklyn, New York, as a domestic servant. While in Brooklyn, she joined Concord Baptist Church, led by Reverend William T. Dixon, president of the New England Baptist Missionary Baptist Conference. When her employer and his family moved to Summit, New Jersey, Violet moved with them. She was 27 years old. Within a year of her arrival in Summit, Violet helped to found the Fountain Baptist Church. Her influence and leadership remains a driving force with the church and community through the remainder of her life. In the early years, the years of adversity, Violet was a pivotal force in keeping the fledging fellowship together. Her indomitable spirit and organizational abilities were visible in every area, the building program, fellowships, and formation of various church departments. She served variously as president of the Board of Deaconess, president of her missionary society, and head of the Baptist Young Congressional Union. Her Christian influence extended even beyond Summit. Violet Johnson was a community builder and an advocate for fair treatment. She turned her own 17 Glenwood Place into the Home Away From Home for young girls seeking domestic work. The Women’s Selling Club and the Girls’ Club, both of which met in her home, were examples of her efforts to inaugurate new migraines from the South into her adopted Northern community. In the midst of the Great Depression, Violet lent her great organizational skills to help organize the Glenwood Neighborhood Club and its youth version, the Glenwood Betterment Club as means of instilling community pride and defending black summits’ rights to decent housing. Violet had a keen political sense. She was the early supporter of women’s rights, seeking for, seeking a ballot for women, and later became a recognized force in the Republican Party of North Central New Jersey. Her political endorsement was a sought-after prize. She was active in the national effort to stop lynching and rioting against African-Americans. Called one of the most honored women in New Jersey, she was indeed a role model. In the 1930s, a young women’s club dedicated to community service, the Violet Johnson Progressive Club stated it was trying to leave, to live up to its name and to the standards of Miss Violet Johnson. As member of the free-born generation of African-American women, Violet Johnson recognized her pivotal role in ushering in the, in the new women, and one able to overcome barriers from without and within. Thank you.
Thank you.[1230.14][1230.14](applause) Thank you all. Yes, thank you all so much. This was a wonderful presentation. If, at the end, if we can get your written statements so, for the clerk, so she can include them in the minutes, we’d appreciate that. Okay, that would be great. And thank you so much. This was wonderful. We, I think this is the first time I’ve been at a council meeting with music, and it was a high point. And Fountain Baptist Church has a real history right where we’re sitting. I don’t know, I’m sure you all know this, but perhaps a lot of people in the audience are not aware that, that Fountain Baptist Church was in the location of where the parking lot is pretty much until 1989, when City Hall was built. And we, and when, in 2018, for the 120th anniversary of Fountain Baptist Church, we worked closely with Dr. Betty Adams to put up a historical marker and showing where the, where the church actually was. So that was an interesting piece of history. So thank you for everything that you all do, and thank you for joining us tonight. And does anyone on, on the dais have any comments, questions? Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate and thank you. That was incredibly moving and educational, and I, we, we just really appreciate you taking the time to share with us and to share your music with us especially. That was beautiful.
Our pleasure.
I just have a few certificates if I’d like to come up and call you.
And we are actually, we have a couple fewer than, we, we got four names, so they’re, so we’ll find out who didn’t, didn’t get a certificate, and we won’t get them to Portia.[1336.33][1336.33](laughter) We got four names, and I think we have six presentations.
So, Portia Hood Marshall, if you could come up and thank you so much.[1346.12][1346.12](applause) Next, Mike. Please. Okay. And Michael Miles.
And when I send the email with the documents, I’ll get.
Get to the rest of the others. Okay, that was wonderful. Thank you. Sorry for that. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you again, everyone. And now we’re, we’ve gotten to the point in the meeting where we are up to public comments. So at this point in the meeting, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment on any matter not on the agenda. Is there anyone who’d like to make a public comment? Okay. All right, I guess we’ll be moving on now to ordinances for hearing. We, introduction, yes, there’s no, the hearing.
Do you want to give them five seconds?
Okay, we’ll give everyone a minute to clear up.
Could you arrange that, Michael? Music every, every other week?
I don’t think we can top this, actually.
Yeah, it was pretty awesome.
Acapella, that’s.
Didn’t we have the jazz band for the first meeting? They were outside in the.
Not in the, not in chambers, though. Yeah.
It was a warm-up.
All right, so now we’ll move on to ordinances for introductions. So we have one from Community Programs and Parking Services, Councilmember O’Sullivan.
I forgot something.
I would need to read the title first, Council President.
Oh, of course.
All right. May I? Yes, go ahead, please. An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 12, Parks, Public Areas, Recreation Facilities, Section 12-3, Summit Family Aquatic Center, and 12-4, Municipal Golf Course.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember O’Sullivan.
Okay, I’d like to clarify just a few things about this ordinance. First, part of it, we’re adding a non-resident senior citizen price category, which will cost $160. Currently, these senior citizens pay the non-resident rate of 320. We settled on 160 because it brings the cost down to a fairer price point, but they will not pay less than any Summit individual resident. Second, at the golf course, Summit corporations currently pay $1,500 for the privilege of their employees to buy a resident golf membership. And along with their green fees, they’re able to play golf at the Summit Muni. This ordinance makes a change so that the corporation still pays the $1,500, but their employee can play golf just by showing their corporate ID and pay green, and pay their green fees. And third, for Summit business owners and their employees that don’t live in Summit, they’re able to purchase, they’re currently able to purchase a non-resident membership for $115 to play golf. This ordinance makes a change so that these Summit business owners and their employees may purchase a resident membership, whether or not they reside in Summit. The new pricing structure will be $50 for adults and 40 for seniors 62 and up. Green fees still apply. Proof of employment or ownership of a business must be presented, and I move this ordinance for introduction.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. O’Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to resolutions. So first, first up, we have a resolution from Law and Labor. So Councilman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 7024 out of Law and Labor, number one, is to appoint two police officers, basically on the recommendation of Police Chief Weck, as well as the support of the Safety Committee, effective Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. We will have two additional, or we will be appointing two police officers. The first individual is Billy Graham, and the second one is Adam Yunice. They will be appointed to the Summit Police Department in the police, position of police officer. They are replacing two policemen who are no longer with the Summit Police Force. They’ll be sworn in in the near future with a formal swearing-in at an upcoming council meeting. I move this resolution.
And I second it.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments from the dais? Okay, anyone in the audience? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So moving on, we’ve got two resolutions from safety and health. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President. I am pleased to move the item number 6984 to appoint three new volunteer firefighters. And I’m going to have to ask for the help of Deputy Chief Nelson, because I don’t have their names, but I do know we’re very pleased to have two Summit residents and one Springfield resident, so if you could.
Come on up.
Don Nelson, Deputy Fire Chief, good evening. If my memory serves me correctly, one is a Carbone, which was just in the room. Another is a Orinstanio, both of them high school graduates from Summit and residents. And the last name, I think, is Fior. I’m not sure of the last name.
Fody.
Fody, so I was close. I had an extra R in there.[1764.12][1764.12](laughter) So thank you. I’ve met two of the gentlemen, the third one I interviewed a long time ago. Probably, we have a long list of volunteers, so we’re slowly narrowing it down, but we look forward to having them on the force. Thank you.
Thank you. So I move to accept these three volunteer firefighters.
I second. Okay. Any comments from members of council?
I guess it’s just important to recognize that this is a great pipeline into the firefighter’s pay position, and we need vol, as many volunteers as.
our Police Department will be communicating first with the public to let them know that we are now cracking down on this very dangerous habit that is really causing accidents and a safety issue for all members of the community. And, let's see, the other important part of it, Chief Weck, is then a patrolman will be given assignments to do this assignment like we do with DWIs. This is a similar grant that we get. And, let's see, is there anything else I'm supposed to talk about here, Chief?
You did a great job. What it is, is it's just, we'll always...
Do you want to come up to the podium, please?
We're always enforcing drunk driving and distracted driving and distracted pedestrians because it's a little bit of everybody. So what this does is this enables us to put officers out on the roving patrols that are not on duty, so they're not answering calls, they're just targeting distracted driving. And as Councilwoman Hairston said, we'll put information out because we'd like to meet all the residents and visitors of Summit, we just don't want to meet you that way. You know, by stopping, we want everybody to be safe. And so you should be leaving a little early, like we always talk about, so that you're not distracted of where you're supposed to be and things like that, and you're just really focusing on getting from point A to point B safely. And also with the pedestrians, because we're very concerned about pedestrians crossing the street and motorists being, you know, kind of focused on what they're supposed to be doing, just driving and paying attention to the laws of the road.
Thank you, Chief.
So do I have a motion?
So I move to approve us applying for this grant.
I second. Okay, are there any comments from members of council?
I would just like to say that we, first year I was mayor, in 2016, we had a distracted driving program. And Chief Weck and I talked, and he said, "Well, you know, Mayor, I mean, I know we're doing this new program, but we do this all the time." And I just want to, you know, this is not something we're going to do for the month of April in 2020. Our officers are out there looking at this all the time. It's people on their phones, it's, you know, looking at the navigation, looking at their GPS, rather than, I mean, looking this way rather than that way. So it's one of our biggest focuses. We talk about it, safety, all the time. We're doing a lot of things for traffic safety, pedestrian safety. It's an issue, and Americans have to really be focused. But I did want to just reassure everyone and say that we've been doing this every year. This is just, gives us a little bit more financial assistance so that officers can do this, and that's all they're doing. They're not going to be answering calls when they hear something over the radio. So that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. Any comments from members of the public?
I got a question. Kind of goes down, we were just going back and forth. Chief, a couple years ago, we were doing the phone in the sack or in the sock thing. Are we still doing that anymore, or is that...
High school thing.
The high school thing.
Yeah, so that was a program through Shaping Summit financed that, and that was a program that was put on where a representative from this company went in and spoke to all the teenage drivers, and then gave them, through funding, a sack that they could put their phone in while they were driving, so that they wouldn't be kind of tempted to see, you know, who was tweeting, who was, you know, the newest Instagram picture, what have you. So we did that, that was like two years ago. We haven't done it since. But we have a whole new, you know, group of students that are now juniors and seniors that were probably freshmen sophomores then. So maybe that is something that we could look into again.
When I was on council, or Safety, I think we were, that's when we did it, so that's...
I can suggest now, if you're a parent, and we haven't done that, take one of those lone socks that doesn't come out of the dryer.
Those old tube socks.
And put it right in the, you know, tell your child to put it right, you know, the phone right in the sock.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. So I think this is a great program. We, you know, the council has made safety a big priority. We hear a lot from residents about pedestrian safety and, you know, and safety of drivers, and it's something that I think is very important and something where we can make a difference. And there's been a lot of activity in this area recently with four-way stops, other traffic calming measures, speed humps, and other ways to slow people down and get them to drive a little more safely. So thank you for doing this. So do I, any other comments from the dais? Nope? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on, we're up to Capital Projects. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. The first Capital Projects Resolution tonight is number 6985, and that's to authorize the 2020 Arbor Day festivities. I'm pleased to tell you that the city's Arbor Day this year will be celebrated on Friday, April 24, 2020. It will be celebrated at the Summit High School, will be the site this year, and we will be celebrating our 24th year as a Tree City USA, which we talked about the last council meeting, but it bears repeating. And the Shade Tree Advisory Committee will be planting nine trees in celebration of Arbor Day this year. There are a variety of species, and they will all be planted at the high school. And not only will the high school students be participating, but the students from Lincoln Hubbard are also going to be traveling up the hill to participate in the ceremony as well, which will take place at 10:00 a.m. with the participation of Mayor Adist as well. So we are looking forward to the festivities, and I move that we approve this resolution so that we can go forward with it.
Second. So any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public?
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number two from Capital Projects is number 7005, and this is to authorize a contract execution for the marketing and transportation of recyclable materials. This is something we've been talking about the last few council meetings, is the change in the environment for recycling. And it's a challenge that's facing municipalities all across the country because the global markets for our recyclable materials have been drying up. China has stopped taking a lot of recyclable materials. Now India's cutting back on their purchase of recyclable materials. So where this used to be a big revenue maker for towns and cities across the country, it is now becoming a greater and greater cost to cities. And it is still a requirement, both by legislation and by the fact that we want to, you know, keep the world a better place and cut back on trash and everything else, but it's becoming a greater and greater challenge for cities. And this is the contract for the recycling materials at the transfer station. We are also in the process of renegotiating the contracts for the curbsides. There'll be more information about that. This is going to be, this bid is, was, we had one bidder on this bid from Jordano, so we are asking to award the bid to them. And we are going to be awarding part of the bid, because we are going to be, awarding the bid to them to market the fiber, cardboard, and the dual-stream recycling materials, but we are going to be doing the transportation of a lot of these materials. We were able to negotiate a floor price with them so that protects us in case there's an extreme downturn in the market. So the amount, if awarded, this contract is not to exceed $140,000. That is a worst-case scenario. The current contract prices are definitely lower than that, so that would be the most that the city would be responsible for. But the, you know, just to keep sounding the bell, this is just an ongoing thing, and we are going to be continuing to communicate with city residents and let them know what is happening, but it's going to be more and more responsibility on us as residents to reduce and reuse instead of constantly recycling. It's also, as we've been talking about, the transfer station is now accepting one, two, and five plastics, and those you can find in the little triangle marks on your plastics, the numbers, and that's what's being accepted through this contract. So that was a lot of information, but it's a lot of information that's important for us all to know about what's happening in the world of recycling. So I ask that we approve this contract execution and that we move forward.
I second that. Any comments from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, Capital Projects, number three. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects Resolution number three is number 6905. This is to award a bid for the Pine Grove Avenue Improvement Project. This does include sidewalks and curbing. This is part of our sidewalk master plan. The total bid is for $465,191. This is, the entire amount is being covered by a grant, so that is good news, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. So I'd like to just put this resolution in a little bit of perspective. As I mentioned earlier, we've been working very hard to work on pedestrian safety, and one thing we've heard from many residents is, in the past two years, is they want more sidewalks. And to that end, we have created a sidewalk master plan, which was adopted this summer, and that was a guide that gave us, that was, it's used to guide us in making decisions about where sidewalks are installed. And this project is the first new project, sidewalk project installation under that master plan. So it's also the first sidewalk being installed under our new funding policy. So at the same time that we adopted the master plan, we also decided that sidewalks are a public amenity that everyone benefits from and that everyone should pay for them rather than just assessing those costs to the homeowners. So instead of a 50/50 share with the city and the homeowners, it's now going to be fully paid for by the city, or in this case, by the grant. So this is, I think this is going to be the first of several new sidewalk projects that you'll be seeing in the next few months and years as we continue to expand our sidewalk network to make Summit more pedestrian-friendly. So with that, does anyone else have any comments? Councilman Bowman.
As the Ward Two representative who got a lot of comments about Pine Grove, as three of us here right here. This is a long time coming, both in the quality of the road and the, but more importantly, the safety of our kids walking to Franklin and to Oak Knoll. So, you know, and Brayton. Yeah, you're right. Thank you. But thank you for this and look forward to this project.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to also mention that there had been, you know, questions and concerns of the residents on Pine Grove, because we do have a lot of children that walk there, but I live on Black Room Place, and I see people on Pine Grove every day. And folks are walking their dogs, they're walking, and they're all walking in the street because there are no sidewalks, and it's a hill, and you get to the crest of that hill, you can't see who's coming on foot towards you, so it's really not safe. But we did, our engineers did have a meeting here for several hours with all the residents. All the residents received notice that we were going to be doing this. They had them all come in. There were quite a few people here that evening, so that they could explain to them why we decided which side of the street to put it on and what the whole process was, and that in fact, this year, for the first time, the residents will not be bearing the cost of the installation of the sidewalks. So I'm not sure when this will begin, but one would hope in the clement weather.
Paul, would you please come up and tell us when we can expect to see some work on this?
Sure.
Thank you.
So as mentioned, we did receive a grant to cover the entire cost. They have, the engineering division has plans for that, so we anticipate starting that shortly. We, of course, do not want to impact school schedules, so some of that work will be done during the summer, of course, while school is out of session.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so are there any comments, any other comments from the dais? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Capital Projects, number four. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects, number four, is number 7029, and this is to authorize submission of a grant application to the Union County 2020 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Engineering Project. So this is a grant opportunity that's being offered to municipalities once again by Union County. There is, this grant is to be used for infrastructure projects that are, that will be finished this calendar year and that are shelf-ready. So we looked at different projects that we had, you know, that were ready to go, and we have chosen the Huntley Road Improvement Area, which was funded through the 2019 capital budget. So we are going to be applying for this grant. If we are awarded this grant, it would obviously reduce the costs of that project for us. So that's a project that we had ready to go. It's going to be completed this year, and that would be for pavement, curbing, and drainage along nine different streets in that Huntley Road area. So it was a good project to put forward for this grant, and we are happy that we have been given this opportunity to apply for it. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Capital Projects, number five. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects, number four, is number 7029, and this is to authorize submission of a grant application to the Union County 2020 Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Engineering Project. So this is a grant opportunity that's being offered to municipalities once again by Union County. There is, this grant is to be used for infrastructure projects that are, that will be finished this calendar year and that are shelf-ready. So we looked at different projects that we had, you know, that were ready to go, and we have chosen the Huntley Road Improvement Area, which was funded through the 2019 capital budget. So we are going to be applying for this grant. If we are awarded this grant, it would obviously reduce the costs of that project for us. So that's a project that we had ready to go. It's going to be completed this year, and that would be for pavement, curbing, and drainage along nine different streets in that Huntley Road area. So it was a good project to put forward for this grant, and we are happy that we have been given this opportunity to apply for it. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Capital Projects, number five. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. The final Capital Projects Resolution, number 7021, is to appoint a member to the Mayor's Arts Committee, and we are happy to appoint Sheila Sarieri as one of that member. She's been involved with the Arts Committee in different ways over the last year or so, and she will be a great addition to the Arts Committee. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on, Community Programs and Parking Services. Okay, number one, Councilwoman Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. Item number one under Community Programs is ID number 7017. This will authorize professional services agreement in excess of $17,500 for the Broad Street Garage Rehabilitation Project Design and Construction Inspection Services for $43,000. The last repairs on the Broad Street Garage were performed in 2015. The garage is in need of inspection services to determine what repairs need to be completed this summer. The cost estimate provided by Boswell Engineering covers preparation of design documents, shop drawing review, construction inspection, and support during construction. I move this resolution.
Second. Are there any comments from members of council? I had a question, actually. Rita, if you wouldn't mind coming up, please.
So I had actually a couple of questions for you. One was, I'm a little confused about construction inspection, because it almost sounds like what they're doing is inspecting after the repairs are done.
No, actually during the actual rehabilitation, during the actual work, they inspect the work that it's done properly, according to code.
But is there, but are they also inspecting...
They're doing an inspection first to determine what, and then engineering inspection to determine what repairs need to be done.
Okay.
Then they give us a report of what the cost will be, projected costs, and they prepare all the bid specs for all the repairs, how many quantities of each, whether it's redone, whether it's concrete, whatever is involved. Then after that, we go out to bid. The bid gets awarded to a subcontractor who's going to do the actual physical concrete repair work. They oversee that repair work.
Okay.
And then... And then, to make sure it's completely done up to standards and codes.
So, is it possible that the cost, once they do that initial inspection, will be different than what's in this contract, depending on what they find?
No, this contract is for them to do all that work. What will be is, and it's always been with Boswell Engineering, they'll give a projected cost, and they do their ultimate best to stay underneath that cost, and normally we save money.
Okay.
This is for all of that work that's involved for the inspection, the bid specs, which are heavily involved with a construction project, and then they inspect during the actual construction, make sure every material is up to standards and code, make sure all the work is done correctly, and labor, all of that work, so the city employees don't have to handle that work.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I had one other question for you.
Oh, sure.
We've been talking about the potential for putting solar panels on that garage, and I know you, we had asked, would that be possible to be looked at in this, in this inspection, and you indicated that there was a lot more to that.
Correct.
But the question was, could we do something simpler, like just a load, just an analysis of what the load bearing of the garage would be? Could they do it?
Well, I met with them on Friday, Boswell Engineering, and we have to have a separate meeting. It should be a separate project, not included with what's being hopefully approved tonight. What we have to look at is, we have to meet with the solar company to see what, how much steel, how high it's going to be, in order to see what the low capacity would be, in order to even see if this project is viable. So, again, they have to be run by two separate projects.
And there's no way that they can actually just tell us what the load bearing of the garage is?
No, because that's what I, I had an extensive meeting with them on Friday. We don't know what the solar company, any solar company, is going to propose, how many solar panels, based upon the garage, what the weight of that is, and that's going to then go and be analyzed by a structural engineer. So, it can't be-
I see. You can't back into it.
No, you can't, no.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so, any other comments from anyone on the DAS? Anyone in the public have a comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, Councilman Sullivan, resolution number two, please.
Thank you, Council President. Item number two for Community Programs is ID number 6990. This is going to authorize the acceptance of Summit Area Public Foundation Civic and Community Grant Award for $10,000. This grant money will go towards supporting a variety of events, special events, which promote diversity and inclusion within the city of Summit, with events such as Yesta Latina, Summit Has Pride, and Trican Inclusion Events. Additionally, the funds will be used toward cultural programming for Black History Month and Asia-Pacific Islander Month in May at the community center. And I move this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? I'd just like to say, Mark, that I think you guys have done a great job with your programming. You've come up with a lot of new programs in the last couple of years, and I think it's really terrific the way you've brought in all different parts of our community, and I think you've definitely, you know, community programs is a perfect name for you because you are creating communities, so thank you. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're moving on to finance now. Councilman Vartan, number one.
Thank you, Council President. Finance Resolution 7022 authorizes the transfer of appropriations within the operating budget from accounts with a surplus to those with insufficient funds. This is a regular occurrence. Until the operating budget is passed, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Does anyone have any comments on council? Anyone in the public have any comments? Okay, so this one calls for a roll call vote, Madam Clerk. Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox. Aye. Okay, motion carries, and we're moving on to finance, number two. Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the tax appeal attorney to file counter petitions, claims, and stipulations with the Union County and New Jersey State Tax Courts as needed throughout the year. This resolution will increase efficiency by allowing these filings to take place without approval of council every time. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, finance, number three.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes a one-year contract extension for grant writing services with Millennium Strategies for $42,000. Representatives from Millennium came to speak with the finance committee. They are going to be meeting soon with all department heads, in addition to the relevant boards and commissions, about budget priorities that potentially align with grant opportunities. Not only do they identify potential grant opportunities, they relieve city staff by doing the heavy lifting of actually writing the grant applications and compiling supporting documents. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments, go ahead, Councilwoman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo the importance of this position. Having attended the planning conference and seeing the plethora of opportunities out there for the city to take advantage of, I know our staff have been really excellent, and I want to thank them for their efforts, but I think this is just a great investment of having these professional services. People take it for granted how difficult it is to apply and identify grants, and so I just wanted to say what a good job they're doing and that we continue it. I really support this.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comment? I'd like to add that this is one of the ways that we are looking to, you know, affordability is always something that we're looking at in ways to keep costs down while still providing the same services to the community, and grants are a great way to do that. And having someone, you know, there to help find the grants and help apply for grants that are, that meet city priorities and help in terms of, in terms of finances is very helpful. It's helpful to defray the costs so not everything is paid for by taxpayer funds. So, I think this is well worth the investment, and I'm hopeful that this year, all of the departments will make use of this service, and also new this year, we're going to try to make sure that all the different boards and commissions are able to avail themselves of these services as well. So, I think this is a great program. Any other comments? Okay, with that, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so, we're on to finance, number four. Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the submission of a grant to Union County for infrastructure and municipal aid for the City Hall Records Management Improvement Project. So, the total cost of the project would be $26,000, and the grant application is for $13,000. I move to adopt this resolution.
I'll second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, moving on, we're on to the consent agenda. So, unless anyone from council or the public has any comments on consent agenda items, we will take them and vote on them as a whole. Okay, it looks like, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, moving on, we're up to council members' comments or new business. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to talk about? Okay, all right, well, I guess we're on to adjournment then. Do I have a motion?
So moved? Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.